The October fourteenth, two thousand fifteen Scarborough zoning Board of Appeals meeting. Uh, roll call please.
Mr. Loizao, Mr. Hebert.
President.
Mr. Maron.
Here.
Mr. Crockett.
Here.
Mr. Stark.
Here.
Mr. Richard.
Here.
Okay, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Hopefully our meeting won't last as long as the debate last night. Um, the, uh, just for some housekeeping, uh, appeal number twenty-five fifty-four, it's a variance appeal by Azulca's thirty-five, uh, Windsor Homer wrote it then tabled per the applicant's request, now looking back, uh, assuming the next meeting. So if anybody's here for that, uh, you can leave. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of September ninth, two thousand fifteen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, that's presented.
In a second. In a second, or we're done at the end? Any discussion on the motion? No, say all in favor? That's unanimous, thank you very much. And we'll jump right into, uh, the first appeal, it's appeal number twenty-five thirty-nine. It's a reapproval of a May two thousand fifteenth variance appeal by Joseph Charley Doherty, sixteen Jones Creek Drive, assesses map U twenty-two parcel oh eight. And, uh, why don't we jump in with your question, your answer?
Uh, yeah, this is basically a, uh, revisit of a previously approved variance, um, that, um, was unintentionally let to expire. Um, variances do have to be recorded within ninety days according to main statute. Uh, and so Mr. Doherty realized that he had not, um, had not recorded the variance at the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds. So he's reapplying for the variance, um, as I understand it, no changes are proposed from the original variance that was approved back in, in...
Thank you. Uh, anybody representing could speak on this? If you could take the microphone, state your name, address, and circum...
Sure. Joe Doherty, sixteen Jones Creek Drive. And, um, so as was noted by, uh, Mr. Longstaff, we had, we had brought this matter to the board in, in May and received, uh, um, unanimous vote to approve the, the variance and paperwork oversight on my part, um, in the flurry of all the other activities and paperwork that was going on, we, we simply neglected to file within the, the appropriate time, within that ninety days. So that required us to come back in front of the board. The, the project itself, the proposed project consists of the demolition of the existing, uh, single family structure that's on the property today and construction of a new single family, uh, dwelling upon the same, the existing foundation. Um, the supporting documents that we've provided to you today are, um, as was noted just a moment ago, they're identical to what was sent to you and provided to you in May. Um, the only changes since May are that we've since, uh, submitted, um, to the town, uh, for a demolition permit, which we've received. We've, uh, talked to DEP and received their approval on the, the proposal as it was made to this board. There were no, no changes.
Congratulations.
Um, and, uh, the sub- we submitted the building permit, the building permit application, which is when we realized that we had not filed as we needed to within the ninety days. So the town is already in receipt of all the other documentation that's needed for the, the building permit. Um, we had planned to start this project in mid-September, so the house has actually been vacant since early September and, and some of the initial preparations for demolition of the existing property were already underway. Of course, as soon as we, we found out that we had this issue, we immediately ceased, um, from doing anything else until we could come in front of the board again.
Great. And a variance appeal doesn't matter if they started the process to, they don't want to get into a trap with the technicality of whether you started, it's not appropriate for your variance. So, unlike a special exception, we should say, if they commenced.
Right, yeah.
So we're okay with that. But I just wanted, in case there's a trip there that would have caused a problem, so, okay.
Not enough, not enough activity has occurred that it would, it would matter at this point.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, when I say preparation, I mean, we, we just pulled all our belongings out of the house and, and pulled a few fixtures off the wall, that kind of stuff. Um, I want to be respectful of the board's time, since many of the members have already heard this, so if I could ask for some guidance, I, I must, you know...
Sure, I, actually, I'd like to actually propose something to the board. Technically, this is a new appeal and should be heard as such. Uh, however, all but one member here, I believe, was at the last meeting, if I remember correctly. That does not mean anything. But what I would suggest we do, if the board is, at the board's will, is that we take the minutes from that previous meeting, apply it to this meeting, and vote on that, as opposed to rehashing the material we've rehashed before. Uh, does anybody have an objection to that? If anybody does, then I won't do it. But if everybody goes up for that, then I move that we take the agenda from...
The minutes.
The minutes from, um, May twelve, uh, May fifteenth hearing. Apply that to this, reaffirm the findings from that date, um, and so, um...
I'd second that.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor? That's unanimous, how's that for saving time?
That's great, I appreciate it.
I have a minute.
Save, save me from, from some talking as well, I appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome, have a good day.
Thank you very much, appreciate your support.
Next appeal's appeal number twenty-five sixty, it's a special exception appeal by Lindsay Dimic, uh, uh, I'm sorry, Dimonick, fifteen Forecaster Way, assesses map R seventy-eight parcel five oh seven. And Miss Longstaff, any comment on this one?
Uh, again, this, let's see, this is a special exception appeal for a home occupation. Um, i- in my staff comments, I had mentioned that the applicant had not, at, at the time, um, demonstrated that not more than twenty percent of the dwelling unit floor area was being used for the home occupation, although I had had a discussion with her on that, and I understood that it, it wouldn't be, but it, none of the evidence that I was able to, that was submitted and I was able to forward to you showed that.
You got so thorough. You're missing a thing.
Uh, so, I just wanted to raise the issue that she had subsequently sent me, um, a plan that shows the area that she intends to use for the home occupation. If I can quickly bring it up here for you. See, whoops, upside down. Could you put in a, an order for a mouse for me?
Yep.
Wireless.
Got it.
Wireless, huh?
Yep.
Yes, please.
Nothing but stuff.
So there, you see, there's a purply shaded area, and look at this, I'm gonna point to it. Purple shaded area right there.
Mm-hmm.
And I believe, I'll let, I'll let Mr. Dimonick explain, but, uh, that is the, uh, area that she intends, I think, to use, and it is clearly less than twenty percent. It's also in an unfinished part of the basement, so it really doesn't matter anyway, because unfinished attics or basements or, or garages don't count as the twenty percent of the floor area. But just wanted to make sure that everybody understood.
If you take the microphone, uh, state your name, address, and what you're trying to accomplish, and we'll go from there, okay?
Sure. Uh, my name is Lindsay Dimonick, and my address is fifteen Forecaster Way in Scarborough. And I am applying for a special exemption to have a home floral studio in my basement. Um, it's a business that I moved, hoping to move to Maine, that I owned and operated in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, for five years, out of my home. Um, and I only do special events, so I work with lots of brides and grooms and, uh, occasionally baby showers or the random sad funeral occasionally. But no clients ever come to my place of business. I work with them wherever it's convenient for them, um, to try to, to make it easy on those people that are planning these life events. Um, so no business happens at the home, except for the actual arrangements themselves, and I actually pick up all of my products myself, so no major deliveries related to the business. Is that everything?
That's very good, thank you very much.
Okay.
Uh, why don't, uh, we start off with any questions from the board? Seeing now, when I open the public hearing, do you have any, uh, letters or phones for the public?
We have not, no.
Uh, from the public hearing, anybody from the public which should speak on this? Saying, no, I'm still dying to see people bring in examples of their work. We gotta work on that. Well, that's a good...
Last time we did, we had a little...
That's right.
Oh, yeah, I should have.
Do you want me to take that a replica?
Yeah, it should be item Z.
Okay, we'll work on that.
Okay.
Okay.
Especially if it's food items.
I know, I was saying flowers for spouses, or...
Yeah, we, we blew in on the one with the, uh, the...
Great demonstration.
Oh, that'd be the worst. Um, Japanese sushi chef. Sushi chef. So let's just jump right into the appeal requirements. She's done a great job of packaging this. It makes it a lot easier for us, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Makes it a lot easier for you, too.
Some of my answers are very concise, so if you have questions...
What I'm going to do is, I'm just gonna read in questions. If you could read in the answers for the record, okay?
Do you want me to expand on the answers, or just be them as is?
You're welcome, so if you'd like to, or you've, it doesn't really matter, I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Sam, and you have the wrong appeal in front of you.
Good catch.
The answer's being, uh, matched.
I don't know, might be one.
This one.
There we go. Maybe funnier, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably not to be a talent.
(laugh) The proposed use will not create unsanitary or unhelpful conditions by reason of sewage disposal, emissions to air or water, or other aspects of its design or operation.
Said, um, none of the above are produced by the creation of floral arrangements. Um, if I use any preservatives, they are safe, um, for disposals down the drain. I work with pretty much all natural, organic elements, and avoid chemicals never possible.
Uh, you own sewer or septic?
Sewer.
Okay. Uh, proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic conditions when added to the existing and foreseeable traffic in its vicinity.
All meetings with my clients are done offsite. Uh, I pick up my flowers at the wholesalers myself. Um, deliveries of supplies are minimal, um, probably limited to the, no bigger than a breadbox, um, and are delivered by the post office, UPS, or FedEx, at most once every other month during the wedding season.
And it looks like you have a, a hammerhead in your driveway, it makes it pretty easy to turn around, is that right, for trucks?
I have a...
Uh, like a, it looks like you got a way to easily...
Oh, yeah, we have a extra spot to the side.
Yeah.
Um, and our street is a cul-de-sac, so they can just turn around completely.
Proposed use will not create public safety problems which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood or require substantially greater degree of municipal fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood.
So I said, no, it will not. Um, to extend on that, nothing I use is combustible. There's no fire, um, or chemicals that pose that risk. Um, and knowledge of there being a business on site, I don't think would imply to anyone that there's a large amount of cash or valuables on site that would warrant any interest in my home.
If you, proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion or have an adverse effect on water supplies?
Said, no, it will not. I don't grow anything on site, there's no gardening going on. Um, all the water I use is delivered in vases or soaked up by foam, and the rest is just, um, manageable by the, the drain. I have a large laundry sink down there.
And the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity to other structures, and density of development.
Yes, correct.
And you're not in a shoreline zone?
No, I'm not.
And let's, uh, you own the property?
I do, with my husband.
Okay. And, uh, last, you have financial and technical ability to meet the standards of, we just thought... And, um, it's consistent with, uh, the proposed use will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to the generation of noise and hours of operation?
Absolutely.
It's just in and out of me.
Just me.
Just you doing it. So you're not gonna have any employees?
Not at this time.
Okay. And when you say not at this time, uh, if, you'd need to come back to the board if you ever have employees?
Yep.
Let's go to the section on, um, in, on businesses. And what we can get there first? You need to go to section nine. Is it on the page? If I can find, we have offices. Should have the splash, should be... I know I should, I don't, and I don't, I actually have a spot for it, too. It's, uh, section nine, uh, V, page of that, section thirty-seven, uh, for those playing at home. The, uh, occupation of profession shall be carried on wholly within the principal residence or within the building accessory thereto. Are you doing this in your basement?
Mm-hmm.
The home occupation shall be clearly, uh, incidental and secondary to the use as well in the unit for residential purposes. And Miss Longstaff's already said it's less than twenty percent, so that makes it pretty incidental.
Right.
So, no more than one person who is not a resident of the property shall be employed in the home occupation. So that's okay with you?
Fine with me.
Uh, exterior signage shall be, do, do you want, you probably don't want exterior signage?
No exterior signage.
Okay. Uh, there shall be no exterior display, um, do you want to put flowers out in front of you?
No.
It's gray, and it's, people put flowers in front of their doors. Um, but displays are different, yeah.
I have lamps, okay.
Um, there shall be no, uh, no nuisance shall be generated, including but not limited to offensive noises, vibrations, smoke, dust, odors, heat or glare.
No.
Uh, and you're not gonna generate any traffic that's, uh, increasing volume to create traffic hazards or disturb residential character of the neighborhood. And then to, you have off-street parking, and I asked about the turnaround in the area.
Yep.
And you've got that. Um, you lose you less than twenty percent. Uh, the space is going to be in the basement, and, um, you're not going to have any retail sales?
No.
So that doesn't affect section ten and section eleven as relevant, section twelve as irrelevant. Okay. So, uh, why don't I, uh, any others on this?
No.
I was asking, they asked you that already.
Yep. No, there are none.
Why don't I go to the board for questions and comments?
Big old question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Uh, it's around, uh, question E, um, which is the compatibility with the existing uses in the neighborhood. Just a couple of questions on that.
Sure.
You don't have any plan for outside storage, I believe you said that?
Not at all.
'Cause they're floral arrangements and wouldn't be conducive to selling them?
Yeah, I don't, I get rid of them as soon as they're made, and...
Uh, and while you're making them up, what kind of volumes do you have on hand for base product to make those arrangements? If you can give me an idea on volume?
Um, like the number of stems of flowers, anything, or...
I know you're gonna have different types of flowers.
Yeah.
Uh, do you plan on having bushels of them, or small volumes of them? What's the plan around, you know, wh-?
So, if I order the flowers, um, from like a wholesaler that ships them in boxes?
Mm-hmm.
Um...
How many boxes would you plan on having in...
I've got three boxes about the size of this podium.
Okay.
I mean...
Nope, that makes sense.
Sorry.
Nope.
We don't deal much in square footage and flowers, so...
And then you probably have foam and...
I have foam, I have materials that I keep on site.
Right.
But everything is contained in that highlighted portion of my basement.
Sure.
Um, storage shelves, all of the containers that I keep as part of my, um, like, collection that brings clients to me, 'cause I have a large, like, um, amount of, like, vintage silver and milk glass, but everything fits in that space, and ev- even when I'm arranging and have flowers on site, it's still all within that space.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
The questions from the board, comments, or your motion?
Oh, uh, move to approve, uh, appeal number twenty-five sixty, as presented.
Seconded.
Discussion on the motion. Can I second it? Uh, yep, same time, can't worry. So, all in favor? That's unanimous, there you go. Thank you very much, good luck with business.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Welcome to Scarborough.
Thanks.
We are Patriot fans here, though. Is it different from Vermont? Okay, you're okay then, all right. You know, I'll come take care of it. Appeal number twenty-five sixty-one, it's a special exception appeal by Christian Lebreck, twenty-three Tapley Road, assesses map R one parcel eight B. And again, Miss Longstaff, anything you'd like to, um, discuss on this one?
Yeah, now that I... You caught you with the wrong one, I...
That's why I have a full check.
There it is, I attached it to the other one. I can only look after one of us at the same time. Um, yeah, pretty much the same, uh, deal, another special exception home occupation. This one's, uh, at twenty-three Tapley Road. Um, the applicant has put together, um, a pretty detailed package. Uh, again, the same criteria that you just reviewed would be applied here.
Very good. Uh, do you have somebody representing? If you could do me a favor, take the stand microphone, just state your name, address, and we'll get you through it.
My name's Christina Lebreck, I live at twenty-three Tapley Road in Scarborough. I am a licensed massage therapist, I currently have a business in Buckston, Maine, uh, my own space there. I'm an independent practitioner, and I'm looking to move my business into a space in my home, uh, here in Scarborough.
Very good, okay. And, um, any letters or phone calls on this?
There was one.
From the public hearing? Anybody from the public which should speak on this? Saying now I'll close the public hearing part of the meeting, and, uh, come to the, uh, the board with any immediate, initial questions or comments? Okay, why don't we jump right into the standards of special exception? Uh, so I'll read into it, and then you can just read what you've written, and we'll go from there, okay?
Okay.
The proposed use will not create unsanitary or unhelpful conditions by reason of sewage disposal, emissions to air or water, or other aspects of its design or operation.
Uh, my massage therapy business will operate within my existing home, which has func- functioning sewage system and on-site laundry. We have a septic system. Uh, recommended cleaning and sanitizing procedures of equipment are followed while minimizing use of known hazardous chemicals and cleaning products.
Very good. The proposed use will not create unsafe vehicular or pedestrian conditions when added to the existing and foreseeable traffic in its vicinity.
Uh, my clients are seen one at a time, which eliminates any foreseeable traffic issues. Ample parking already exists in our current driveway, which is two hundred and fifty feet plus in length.
Um, and Christian, if I own that, how, how many applicants do you see in a day typically?
Uh, generally only, no more than two clients in a day, and that would be only on a weekend. Generally, one client, uh, in the evening on a week, on a weekday.
Okay. And what's, what's the latest time of your operation?
Uh, I do not accept any, uh, appointments after six P.M.
You're okay with us putting that in the record?
Sure.
Mr. Chair, can we also ask questions, or are you gonna wait?
Sure, if, if you, with this, I think it's easier just to go ahead, as you know.
Okay. Uh, how many spots of parking are up near the residents?
We have, there's a, there's a square in front of the garage. We park our vehicles in the garage at all times. So we could fit, uh, two, maybe three vehicles in there.
Is there a turnaround portion of the driveway, so, okay?
There is, yes, we use that.
Okay, excellent. And, uh, you don't foresee anybody backing down two hundred and fifty feet to go out on the road, correct?
No, I don't advise people to do that, we ask them to turn around.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, and the, um, proposed use will not create public safety problems which would be substantially different from those created by existing uses in the neighborhood or require substantially greater degree of municipal fire or police protection than existing uses in the neighborhood.
Uh, my clients are seen one at a time, and all new clients are screened appropriately prior to their appointment. Uh, existing neighborhood home and professional safety practices are followed.
And proposed use will not result in sedimentation or erosion or have an adverse effect on the water supplies?
Minimal water use is needed for each client session with any waste disposed into our existing system.
And the proposed use will not, will be compatible with existing uses in the neighborhood with respect to physical size, visual impact, intensity of use, proximity to other structures, and density of development.
Uh, we're not gonna be needing to make any exterior structural changes. Transition time is allotted between client sessions to prevent more than one client there at any given time. A small business sign will be installed at the end of our driveway within the, uh, code, um, specifications, up to square feet, I believe, it'd be.
And it's six square feet.
Six, right.
And it, when it's six square feet, it doesn't mean squ- six square feet with balloons and, uh...
Right. It's gonna be, that, that's actually more...
It means six square feet.
Right.
It's really important to define that, a sign is all of its components, so it's, um, we've had different interpretations of that over the time, so just wanna make sure you're comfortable with it.
Okay.
Um, and then we'll go right into, again, the performance standards for in-home occupation. Uh, the occupation of profession shall be carried on wholly within the principal dwelling or within a building accessory thereto. And I know that, uh, Miss Longstaff, I'll take a picture up there for a second. Is there a special space in the house that you'll be using if still using?
Yes.
The, oh, I see, right, you have the treatment room.
Mm-hmm.
So...
Need me to point to it?
Sure. Give me a point.
With the tree tied up there.
There you go. Okay. And the home occupation shall be clearly incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling unit for residential purposes? And if you could do me a favor, speak out loud just to fix the record.
Right, yes.
Uh, no more than one person who is, uh, not a resident of the dwelling unit shall be employed in the home occupation?
Yes, correct.
It's just going to be yourself?
That's myself.
Okay. Uh, exterior signage is permitted, uh, under section, uh, eleven, I'm sorry, section twelve subsection E, which basically says you can have a six-square-foot sign. Is it attached to the house or on the road? I mean, we'll double-check that before we get done, if you could look it up on me.
Yeah, how, I thought it had to be some feet from the house.
I think that's on the road, more.
Do me a favor and look that up while we're talking on it, I just wanna make sure I give you the right information. Uh, there shall be no exterior display, no exterior storage materials, and no, no other exterior indication of home occupation or variation from the residential character of the principal dwelling, uh, except as expressly permitted by the district regulations of the ordinance. Uh, that really applies to law, it does not kill officer traps, so I'm assuming that doesn't apply.
Correct.
Uh, no nuisance shall be generated, including but not necessarily limited to offensive noise, vibrations, smoke, dust, odors, heat, or glare.
Correct.
Uh, traffic generated by such home occupation shall not increase the volume of traffic so as to create a traffic hazard or disturb the residential character of the immediate neighborhood. How most appointments an hour?
Mm-hmm.
How most appointments an hour, or...
Uh, up to an hour and a half.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, in addition to the off-street parking provided to meet the normal requirements of dwelling, adequate off-street parking shall be provided for the vehicles of each employee and the vehicles of the maximum number of users. So you only have one at a time, you have no employees, and it looks like you have a hammerhead that allows people to go out.
Yes.
And you tell them to do that, so, good. Uh, the home occupation may utilize not more than twenty percent of the dwelling unit floor area. Um, Miss Longstaff, have you done the, the measurements on that?
Yeah.
It looks less than twenty. On the floor, great. Uh, and let's see, home occupation's made, you're not doing any retail sales or anything? Do you sell potions or whatever, lotions or, um...
No, not at this time.
Rocks, so... Okay. It's out of my league, I don't know.
It's just one on the, one on the end of the driveway, Mr. Chair.
And, uh, but...
That's one on the end of the driveway.
One on the end of the driveway. And that has to be how many feet off the road?
Mr. Loizao, where are you finding that?
Uh, ten twenty-three, I think.
Section twelve. Ten twenty-three, what's ten twenty-three?
Oh, section twelve. Section twelve.
Page.
Page ten of twenty-three.
Yeah.
I didn't even bring my shirt from the chains. I should've done my homework on this beforehand, I'm sorry, um...
It's in the chart.
The chart? Chart, that, uh...
Yeah. It just says it applies to a certain...
Oh, it's not a lot.
Yeah, on a lot, but I, you, you quoted an actual dimension, which I...
It doesn't say on the lot.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, it's actually, it can be anywhere on the lot, it's just gonna be six square feet.
Right, just, I don't believe it's on the dwelling, though, I think it says on the lot, so that means off the, off the building?
One per lot, it can be a, it can be a wall, sorry.
It could be, okay.
Uh, for home occupation, it, uh... Yeah, it could, it could be either.
Okay.
No, no limitation to it. Six square feet, the standard.
So it's twelve, section E, that's one. So... So, just, so, you know what we're reading here? Is it, um-
Home occupation, the only, the only thing that's, that talks about it is, uh-
Turning.
Right here.
In an R.F., so.
She's R.F.
Yeah. About all, all of the, all of the, so, it's the same square footage, but there's no, but there's no stipulation.
Great.
The only other place is B, either B one, or B one, uh, uh, excuse me, uh, B one, B three. Signs identifying the name and address of, and address and profession of the permitted home occupation or lawfully existing non-conforming home occupation are allowed to buy it if the amount does not exceed six square feet in area and is non-illuminated. Those are the two.
And this can-
Non-illuminated.
This can be illuminated or it can't?
It can be illuminated.
Cannot.
Yep. Non-illuminated.
So, kind of put that in perspective, and I'll translate to know what you can do. You can have up to a, it can be three by two, it can be one by six, it can, as long as it's no more than six square feet, including the whole sign. And why that's important, just so you understand, is oftentimes we've found that recently we see banners, we see Christmas lights, we see all kinds of things. It's six square feet, attractive sign, that's consistent with the neighborhood, and, uh, as long as you're comfortable with that, that's, that's perfect. There's no requirement from the road other than probably a mailbox.
At six square feet, I mean, the setback from the road is negligible.
Just watch the plow.
Yeah. The plow really is gonna determine it.
So, um, does that work for you, okay?
That works fine, I'm just trying to think of, I have the mailbox set up right now, it's a wooden post, so I'll have to take her out.
You don't have to put it on a mailbox.
I don't even have to.
Yeah, it, it'll require a sign permit, so we can discuss all that when we come in for it.
Okay.
We don't need to belabor it tonight.
Okay.
Okay, so we've gone through all the criteria. Why don't we come back to the board for questions and comments and the motion?
I've got one question for Mr. Longstaff. Um, in a home occupation like this where they're actually gonna have people going inside, and how many bedrooms in the home?
Uh, three bedrooms.
Three bedrooms on a septic? Does that affect it? Do you have to check the size for that, for?
She's not, she's not, um, she's not using water consumption as part of the home occupation.
So, they're no, no more than normal use of the bathroom?
Yeah, it wouldn't be, it would be negligible use.
Okay.
Um, so it wouldn't add, it really wouldn't add any additional flow, uh, other than, no different than if you had a guest in your home.
Right. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Are there questions from the board?
Pretty straightforward.
Now, do they have a motion?
Let's make a motion to approve twenty-five sixty-one, appeal twenty-five sixty-one.
Seconding.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? That's again unanimous. Thank you very much, good luck with your operation. One side.
I'll have to do the questions.
Thanks for putting that up on the screen, I can make a difference. I love the point. Um, appeal number twenty-five sixty-one, it's a special exception appeal by, uh, Christina LaBrecq. Uh, I'm sorry.
No. Gonna move on.
I'm losing it here. We're skipping that one. All right, there we go.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
I'm like, oh.
Speaking of being confused, there we go. It's an appeal number twenty-five sixty-two, it's packed, the difficulty variance, because by Peter and Lorraine Talbot. Three Pine Wood Circle, Assessors Nap, U seventeen, parcel seventy-five. Mr. Longstaff, any, any you'd like to share with us on?
Um, again, it is a practical difficulty variance because the property is not in shoreland zone or the floodplain, so they, they, they can't apply for the practical difficulty. Um, the applicant wishes to raise the structure, uh, tear it down, and, uh, replace it with another single-family dwelling. Um, the lot is relatively constrained, uh, making it difficult to meet setbacks and get, um, their required square footage. Um, uh, the building coverage, uh, that they're proposing will increase the existing from seventeen point eight to twenty percent, which is the, the allowed, uh, maximum building coverage in the R two district. Um, and I think from there, uh, the applicant can probably present her, her case and answer your questions.
Very good, thank you. Feel free to take the microphone.
Did you lose, did you win the bet or lose the bet? No, I guess you're both gonna do, okay. I, I was wondering if you drew straws here.
I'm gonna let him do the heavy lifting. Good evening, uh, my name is Lorraine Talbot, my husband Peter. Be shy. Um, we live at Three Pine Wood Circle. Um, I am gonna read this because I didn't do so well in public speaking, um, so-
Don't worry about it, as you noticed, neither have I. So, feel free to talk as you need.
So, we, uh, we did prepare a little opening, um, statement that we'd like to share with the board.
Feel free.
We are a longtime resident of Scarborough. We purchased Three Pine Wood Circle on June one of this year as a part of a plan to downsize, um, now that our two sons are grown and gone, twenty-six and twenty-two years old, and they're on their own. Um, of course, we hope they'll come back to visit, um, often.
But not too long.
Uh, often, right. Um, with maybe family in tow at some time down the road. So, when we bought this property, our plan was to do a major renovation of the main house while tearing down the one-car garage and breezeway, which, um, are not on concrete foundations, and replacing them with a new two-car garage with a smaller breezeway. As our plans progressed, it became clear that the proposed renovations to the house were going to cost almost as much as new construction. And equally important, even a full renovation would not fix several of the structural and safety issues with the house, including a concrete block foundations with significant cracking, a wet basement, and steep, narrow stairwells. And we did provide some photos in our package to you, um, to demonstrate some of these, these features of the property that are less than ideal. We concluded that all new construction was the best way to go. When we checked in with code enforcement, we were told that because we were proposing to tear down the existing house and in, in its entirety and not building on the existing foundation, we would need to apply for a variance, and so that's why we're here this evening. In the package submitted to the board, we believe that we've answered every question and satisfied every requirement for approval of the variance, but we would like to emphasize two things that we feel are relevant. First, Pine Wood Circle is a small neighborhood characterized by small houses on small lots. Most of the houses predate the town zoning ordinance. We do not believe that any of the twelve to fifteen houses in the neighborhood conform with the setback and lot coverage requirements of the current ordinance. In fact, several of the houses sit on extremely small lots and are situated almost directly on the road. Our house would appear to be one of the closest to conforming on the street, and our plans will result in a house that is more in conformance than the existing house. We have spoken personally with most of our neighbors, and in general, they've been supportive of the plan. Second, the current structures do not conform with the setback requirements of the R two zone in three places. A pressure-treated wooden deck in the rear or north side of the house, and the existing garage to the right or east, both are approximately five feet into the required fifteen-foot setback. In addition, the main house is approximately twenty-eight feet from the front lot line, not the required forty. In our plans, the new house and garage are moved more into the center of the lot, which removes the rear and side setback issues. As a result, the only variance we need to request is a front setback variance, uh, a ten-foot reduction from forty to thirty feet, and the granting of this variance will actually move the house further away from the road. Um, as I stated earlier, the current house is twenty-eight feet from the front lot line, and the new house, if our, uh, request is approved, will be required to be at least thirty feet from the front lot line. So, to sum it up, we think that our request for the reduction in the front setback requirement is reasonable and benefits all concerned. Of the three existing setback issues, two were corrected and one will be reduced. We hope the board will look favorably upon our request, and we thank you very much, and we'd be happy to, is there any questions you have?
Thank you, thank you. Anything to add?
No, I think she, uh, covered it in that introduction, and as I say, I'll, I'll, we'll, both of us will try to answer other questions you might have.
Okay, okay, thank you. Um, any letters or phone calls on this?
There was none.
I'll open the public hearing. Saying nobody, I'll close the part of the meeting for the public hearing. And why don't we go right into, uh, the requirements? And what I'd like to do as we go along, because this is a, a harder appeal, is I wanna stop with each one and have board members ask questions if they'd like, and then we'll continue through. Okay? So, we'll make those as part of the finding of fact. Mr. Chair.
And I'd just, I'd mention to the board that I have dealt with the Talbets since their purchase of the property, and, and this is probably a strong possibility that I could be the contractor, and just wanted to let everybody know that and feel like I could be as objective with this case. They're best comfortable with that.
I'm good with that, Mr. Chair. I'm good.
You have any problem with that? All in favor of leaving, uh, on, on, stretch is on position? It's fine. Make it disclosure. Not just for the record, anytime there's a potential for, um, the conflict that's required by the board member that might feel that way, to disclose that potential, and then it's the responsibility of the board to determine whether or not they feel there's a valid reason to recuse himself. And the board looks at each circumstance individually. You just witnessed exactly what happened with that. That is the requirement of the law, which says that we have to disclose a potential, uh, conflict of interest. So, thank you for going through on that, and we will continue. Okay, so, um, we've gotten the letters, uh, get myself a little, hello? Let's jump right into the, uh, requirements, okay? The var- the needs of the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not the general conditions in the neighborhood. Would you like to read in exactly what you have?
Uh, the unique circumstance is that this lot and house predate the town zo- the town zoning ordinance, uh, under the R two zoning that now exists. The lot is non-conforming. It's eight thousand square feet versus the required twenty thousand square feet. And the existing structures are non-conforming. They are too close to the front, rear, and east side lot lines. The lot is a hundred feet wide by eighty feet deep. This results in an allowed building envelope under the ordinance of seventy feet by twenty fight, uh, twenty-five feet deep. Uh, this severely restricts the depth any house that could be built, and our ability to build a new house and fix all the safety issues on site.
Okay. Uh, board comments or questions on that specific issue? It's not gonna be the end of it, but I'd like to get each one as a finding of fact.
Yeah, you had mentioned, um, that the foundation was cracked and having some issues. What other type of issues are you having? As far, as far as safety?
Just relating to the foundation or just the house in general?
Safety, safety issues.
I'd, I'd say that the, the three safety issues that really couldn't be fixed by renovation, because we went pretty far down that path with an architect and so on, would be the basement foundation with the cracking, also the leaking and, uh, sort of general mustiness as well, and water in the basement, although I suppose a TC Hafer kind of thing could mitigate that a bit. Uh, then I think the other one that is, is hardest to correct under the renovation, and this is what was pushing us towards new construction, is the stairwells are extremely steep, extremely narrow, and I'm not even six feet tall, and I have to duck to, uh, go up. Um, uh, I do believe that if we went the rehab route, which was our original intention, we could've fixed electrical and plumbing and even egress window issues, but the first issues I mentioned just don't seem to be able to be reasonably fixed by rehab.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they're, they're, I mean, the service at the house is sixty A.M., so it's out of code. We were planning to do, and it's-
You can't even wipe off, huh?
So, we were planning to do that, I mean, that's a big safety thing, and anyway, but those staircases are pretty nasty.
And do you have mold or any pieces of these blocks that are protruding out or coming out?
I'd, I'd say no. It's mostly just lots of cracking that's been patched over the years and newer cracks that have revealed themselves. I'm no mold expert, uh, I don't see mold on cardboard or anything in the basement. It's just generally dark stains on the wall and kind of mildewy. I don't know if it's technical a mold issue, I don't think it is.
Um, but, but, in the pic-
Not an expert.
In the picture that shows on the concrete block, that black, yeah, that actually looks like black mold.
Yeah, it does.
Uh, which is very dangerous.
Yeah.
So, I, did you, did you try washing it off with bleach or anything?
We haven't touched it.
Don't go down there and breathe?
As, 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 as little as, we go down there as little as we can.
I mean, I'm not a mold expert, and obviously I'm looking at a picture, but, but I've seen black mold, and that looks like black mold. Um, and I appreciate your candor, um, but that's also a solid reason for us to look at making the exception. I, I'm gonna assume that's black mold, because it, it looked like it to me. Do you, do you agree with that? Look, you've seen it before.
No.
You know, that's good to know, you don't think it's, you don't think it is?
I, I don't know that. I, I can't tell by looking at the picture.
I just don't know what else it would be there for.
It's very, it's, it, it, it could be from a number of different things, it's just very difficult to say.
All right.
I think, I think it probably is reasonable to, to assume that the basement is continually wet, that there may not be black mold, but probably some types of mold.
Well, from some me, really remediation classes that I've taken through Serpro and things, some of these stainings generally attribute to mold. I don't know if it is mold or not, not a really up-close picture, but it's definitely-
I would say the, the cracks, you know, and, and water penetration is more of a, an issue. You know, I mean, you can see that.
As opposed to guessing.
As opposed to guessing what the black is. I, I'm not saying it's not mold, I just know, you can't tell.
That's fair.
If I could, one other thing that sort of makes the wet basement even harder is because we're dealing with a house that has virtually no overhang or eaves, and so if I understand the front setback, or the setbacks correctly, we really couldn't even extend out our eaves, because that would be into the setback, and so it made it hard to get the water away from the house, even under renovation.
And you, you had indicated that you could have, uh, seventy feet by, is that right?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
So, you're actually using the seventy feet, uh, that would be if this was a normal design, and then you're using-
Correct. Twenty-seven feet, right? Two-foot impact, was it?
It's, uh, the depth is what?
Twenty-five, I think.
And the depth is thirty? That's a C, no, what?
Right, they're going from a twenty-eight foot to thirty-foot setback now, on a forty-foot setback.
On the front, and the building size, how much does the building, uh, size increase from the original one?
Uh, did the question have to do with the coverage?
Yes.
I believe the coverage goes from about fourteen-twenty to the full sixteen hundred, which brings us up to twenty percent coverage.
Fourteen-twenty?
Yeah.
And is the current structure a two-by-four construction?
It is.
Mr. Chair, that's one of my bigger concerns, with a block foundation, knowing that it's got a two-by-four wall structure. It's not as rigid as a two-by-six would be.
It's odd to see two-by-four in this market.
So, put it, nineteen-fifty structure, I mean, that, to me, that, that gives them a right under question number one to make the change and say yes.
And we're showing, uh, about a hundred and eighty square feet increase in size, is that right?
In plan, yeah.
For the, uh, for my engineering friends here?
Yeah.
Okay. Um-
I was told there'd be no matter.
Any other, uh, comments, questions, uh, findings of fact on number one? Number two. The granting of the variance will not produce an indes- undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood and will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use or the fair market value of abiding properties.
The granting of the variance will not produce any undesirable changes in the neighborhood. In fact, it will allow us to improve the neighborhood by replacing a rundown cape with a garage and breeze, uh, breezeway that are set on the ground with no foundations, no concrete foundations, with a more attractive cape that's better positioned, uh, as a result of the new building being located a few feet west, set to the west, more in the middle of the site. Uh, a high-quality new house should have a positive effect on the use and fair market value of the abiding properties.
I like the fact, uh, just an observation, that most of the homes, as the pictures show, are either, um, two-story capes, they're, they're mostly, um, at least these pictures show, either cape or, or- Is it, uh?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, yeah, are you ready?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, yeah, are you ready?
So, all of this is, is, uh, so what I like about it is that I don't, I think, as opposed to many of these that come through, I would say that they're not trying to maximize, they're not going three stories, uh, they're, they're not trying, you know, I think that's, they're using, they're doing a design that's consistent with the neighborhood. I think it's important to put a, a huge colonial in there with a three-car garage as opposed to an attractive, uh, ca- uh, cape with a dormer. I, I think is positive and tied to that. So, I think it's very consistent with, uh, the change in the neighborhood.
It adds to that by bringing the, uh, structure back in more in line on both side setbacks and better on the front setback, and it is more in line with the character of the neighborhood.
I think it's important to, I agree.
Are you going higher than you were, uh?
Uh, no, it's, it's, we're replacing or hoping to replace a one-and-a-half story cape with a breezeway and, and garage, with a one-and-a-half story cape with a breezeway and garage. We may end up being a foot or two higher because we are going to hope for nine-foot ceilings on the first floor. And I'm not an expert on roof pitch, but if the roof pitch is a normal cape roof pitch, I think we'd only at the most be up a foot or two from, uh, where we are now.
As, as far as this board is concerned, I would, um, not want that to be a limiting factor in approval if we do approve it and with that, with the, uh, the planning department.
I, I agree, I think it's pretty clear they're not trying to get a third floor out of this, they aren't trying for that at all, so-
You mean like a floor that doesn't really be a-
Exactly, so-
Yeah, okay, good. All right, so, I'll move to the next one, let's move out to the, um, number two. And number three, the practical difficulty is not the result of an action taken by the applicant or prior owner.
Uh, that's correct. The difficulty results really from the lot and the buildings both predating the zoning ordinance. And that's about it.
And no other feasible alternatives available to the applicant expect, except the variance. This is the toughest one for many of us, uh, but I think the two-by-four construction and some of the problems in the basement are going to help us, but go ahead.
But, uh, I'll read what I said here and then maybe we'll have some other comments. Uh, correct, we've looked at all other options, especially rehab. Working with the existing structures, it appears to be impractical and virtually impossible to fix all of the structural and safety issues, which include, uh, staircases and bedroom egress windows that do not meet code, unsafe electrical wiring, crap-blocked foundation walls, water intrusion and related issues, lack of foundation under the breezeway and garage, well, and sort of disgusting pet urine that's all around the dining room, that not only required a removal of carpeting and hardwood flooring, but it also seeped into the studs and, uh, subflooring.
Now, is it your dog?
And I'm sure you were throwing me the photos on.
No, 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 it was not our, we don't have dogs, no, it wasn't our pets.
That's, that's right.
But, but as I said before, I think that, that we've looked extensively at rehab, to the extent of spending a fair amount of money on an architect doing the existing floor plan and, and then changing it. And the problem was, uh, though we wanted to go down the rehab route, we just couldn't solve some of the problems.
Didn't you say even with the eaves, if you were going to extend the eaves to take some of the water away, you would put yourself further out of conformance?
Correct, my understanding is, the house right now has virtually no eave, maybe a two-inch overhang, which results in water running down the house and through the foundation. And my understanding is we can't put a ladder or whatever you call it to extend the eaves because that's getting further into the front setback or rear setback.
Did, did the architect give you an idea of what the cost would be if, if you raised the home, put a foundation under the home and under the breezeway as well as the garage? Did he give you an idea of what that cost would be?
The architect did not, no.
Okay. I, I would think that's going to be a significant amount of money for no valued gain except for improving the structure below the structure. Now, you've still got a two-by-four home and you've still got stairwells that are steep, it doesn't change any of that, so-
And pet urine.
Pet urine.
Well, you got that sixty year old, you got to be done with it.
Pet urine because you're the previous owner and I would eliminate this opportunity to come through. Um, tied with the, uh, the, all the comments that you made, I, I would tend to agree with everything you've said here except for the pet urine because I don't know when that happened. Um, um, as far as the, I did want to tie something with this, the feasible alternative. Um, the eaves, do we have, I, I, the drawing itself that I can tell, do you have drawings that show the eaves? Are we, are we looking from the, from the eave or are we looking from the foundation in the drawing?
It's, it's my understanding that the setbacks that have been proposed are from property lines to the eave lines.
Is that your, is that your concern?
Correct, so-
We had that discussion down-
As example, if you had a, a, a twenty-eight foot deep house, we actually showed it as thirty feet, I think, on the, on the plot plan.
So, you didn't want a fleet side?
Because that was really, we were told to do it that way to show the coverage.
Good, as long as you understand that, that's, that's all right.
Yeah, oh, yeah, it, it, if you look at, if you look at the numbers, there's a foot or a foot and a half around the foundation extending out in every direction on the plot plan.
But I also show that, that shows effort on the applicant because it was at twenty-eight feet with no eaves. Now, they're going to thirty feet setback on the front with eaves. So, that's a three or four foot difference in the front, s- front edge of that home. Trust me.
Of, of the front wall of house.
Correct.
Other comments on the board on number four? I think it's pretty straightforward personally, I think it's, uh, it's usually one of the harder ones to meet. I think you've done a good job documenting it. Uh, I have to be candid, when I looked at the pictures prior to the meeting, I didn't really understand it. And when you describe the story, it's a lot easier to visualize why you're doing what you're doing.
It's, it is deceiving because the exterior of the house, uh, is, is in pretty good shape because it's newer siding, a roof, and replacement windows. But you step inside the house and it's nineteen fifty, pretty much.
It, it was really built as a summer camp and it's, it's a little rugged. We, and we had hoped to save it because it has some nice features, but it's, we don't feel it can be.
And take pictures.
And this is intended to be year-round?
Yes, yes, oh, yeah.
Uh, it's, it's really pretty difficult to insulate two-by-four walls, uh, to the standards that we need, I think, in this region, anyway.
You really don't see that unless you're Massachusetts or below, yeah?
Yeah.
So, I, I think, Mr. Chair, if I were to summarize, I think they have met their need for, um, for covering the feasible alternative question, that they looked at rehab significantly, backed out of that, now they're at a new home, and by doing that, they're now bringing in the side setbacks and the front setback, so they're not trying to maximize here.
I agree with that, I think they've done exactly what the ordinance so far with these, so far, uh, what the ordinance has been looking for.
I agree.
We will continue. Uh, the granting of the variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance with surrounding properties.
Pinewood Circle is a, a small, older local street with approximately fifteen homes. We believe that all but one of the homes predate the zoning ordinance. The majority of homes, including the homes immediately to the east and west, are on very small lots where the lot size and building size location are non-conforming. Three Pinewood Circle, our house, is more nearly in conformance than most of its neighbors. Uh, a proposed new construction bring the property, brings the property even closer to conformance by completely removing the setback issues on the eastern and rear sides of the property as well as reducing the setback issue on the front. And then we just said, a photo of the abiding houses are attached, and with Three Pinewood, if, if you look at Five Pinewood Circle, uh, that, that house can't have more than a six-inch setback from the property line. Um, that's how they were built back then in the forties and fifties.
I, I think that the applicant's done a, a very nice job of trying to conform as much as they can, uh, within this property and, as we stated before, not, not try to overdo it and go up two and a half, three stories.
Yeah, I think it definitely brings it more in conformance by bringing in both side setbacks and the front setback more in compliance than it was before, so, and they haven't gone higher.
And that's always what we're looking for, is more conformance if we can.
And, and order to give someone a chance to use their pointer, if you look at the picture, if you're, if you're, go to the red-
You guys set this up before, you know.
If I have a red car on the right, if you could go to that one. There's our roughly ten-foot setback, the fence is the property line. And to me, this is the most significant thing. We have, we have about a ten-foot thing there between our neighbor's fence and deck, uh, and then our garage. And we will at least be moving that five feet to the left to really get our garage right out of our neighbor's backyard face. To me, that was, the rear setback, that was just someone's backyard, so it wasn't a big deal. Front setback, we're talking just a couple of feet. But that, that right hand or eastern setback is a significant improvement, um, for Ally, our neighbor, and she's, was pretty happy about it.
I just want to warn you that if this gets through, you have to go through him to get that thing built.
All right.
Be careful on the pointer, Joe.
Yeah, I agree.
I didn't agree with that, I think you, all the board has stated it perfectly. The variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly into conformance. It's exactly what this is designed for, so I feel comfortable with that. Uh, the granting of the variance will not have an unreasonably adverse effect on the natural environment?
Uh, correct, the lot is primarily flat with open lawn areas except along the western lot line, that's between three and five Pinewood, um, where there are two large pines that are shown on the survey. It is expected to stay that way except for the addition of some foundation planting. The coverage ratio for the pros buildings meets the twenty percent requirement and the proposed paved driveway will cover approximately the same area of the existing driveway. A positive effect on the environment will be the replacement of an old oil furnace with a more modern environmentally friendly, uh, gas furnace. In addition, wood burning fireplace to be replaced by a new gas fireplace. Uh, just to visualize, our driveway that you saw in that picture will be taken out, uh, be exactly the same size, it'll just be moved five feet to the wa- west or left to obviously line up with the new garage, which has been moved five feet to the west. So, same size, a tar pavement coverage, whatever you call it.
Any board comments on that issue?
I think that's pretty straightforward, just don't change.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, and number seven, you're not in the shoreline zone, which allows us to be able to use this, this, uh, type of appeal?
That's correct.
Okay, very well presented, thank you. Uh, we have got on the record the, uh, the comments of the board members as findings of fact. Any board member wish to change any of their findings of fact on any of those specific issues?
No.
No.
Anybody wish to add anything regarding the findings of fact on any of these specific issues?
No.
Mr. Chair, did we vote on number five?
Uh, number five, we didn't vote on any of them yet, uh, so we've just basically gone through. Uh, what I wanted to do is initially just get, uh, the findings of fact at the same time so we could be a little bit easier for everybody.
Yeah.
Um, I'll just kind of summarize what I see, and I think I probably can speak for all of you on this. I, I think this is a classic example of responsible use of the zoning regulations and especially the practical difficulty variance. Uh, I think the documentation is well complete, I do think it's black mold, I'm sticking to it.
Let it go.
Not that that would matter in the, I think there's enough reasons to say that this is, uh, appropriate. If anybody wants an example of how to do a project and get it through the board, I think this is a pretty successful presentation. Uh, and did that, uh, last for a motion?
I would, uh, move to approve appeal number twenty-five sixty-two as presented, and, uh, thank you very much for this presentation.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Say no, in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you very much for the new home.
Very much.
Thank you very much.
Just set an example for others to come after you.
Very good, um. Okay, so, this, uh, the, uh, do we have any more information on the appeal of, uh, speaking of maximizing, the appeal that we went, I'm trying to remember the number of it, you might-
Vesper Street?
Vesper Street, have we heard anything from, um?
They were supposed to-
Brian might know about it.
Um, thank you.
Thank you, take care.
Um, with regard to that one, the, the, we've met with the applicants, uh, and their designer on no fewer than four occasions since the last meeting. Um, they're struggling to, um, reduce the size, you know, like, of the building and still meet their family needs, which is what I kind of expected was their issue. And, um, so, we, they're still, you know, they've met with, um, Mr. Dan Bacon a few times, uh, myself, a, a, a time or two, um, have gone through and rehashed, um, what we felt was the board's directive, um, on, uh, what they were looking for, for something that was, for lack of a better term, approvable. Um, and they just haven't gone there yet.
Appeals, they're just, I don't know the answer to this because I haven't had this happen. Traditionally, we allow an appeal to be appealed, to be moved one or two months out. We left this to be appealed, we didn't specify specifically. Is there a regulation that says at some point that the appeal has to be refiled?
Um.
Uh, it seems like ninety days would be consistent with recording, so-
I think the, I think the mistake that we may have made, uh, that the board may have made is, is not putting a timeline on the tabling of that appeal.
That's correct.
Um, and so, whenever, maybe just for future reference, whenever the board wishes to table something, they probably ought to set a date when that appeal will come back to the board. Um, so, depending on the nature of, you know, the missing information or what, what's needed, you might not be able to get that in one month and be back the next, or they may not be able to-
Sure.
To get it submitted in time to be on the agenda for the next month. So, as a general rule, unless it's something very minor, you'd almost want to set it for, you know, sixty days out or the, the, the following month, the, the month after.
And then acting in faith as far as coming in, and I agree with you.
They're, they're, they're still trying, they're working, it's not laying, it's not lying dormant at this point.
That, that is appeal number twenty-five fifty-five.
Twenty-five fifty-five? Um, okay, I don't know if there's a point at this time to make a motion other than that we're just making it aware. At some point, the timeframe will need to require, and I would argue it's, I would, I don't know this, uh, maybe for the next meeting we can get an answer, but I would think at some point there's a trigger by code that says, an appeal has to be applied for.
Yeah. Um, there, I haven't, I've looked and, and usually that would be spelled out in your, in your charter or in your, in your board, um, uh, bylaws, and it, and it really isn't.
Just odds of entry.
So, then we go to, you know, normal board procedures, um, in the MMA manual, and I'm not sure that that's, um, going to, going to provide much guidance either. So, I can certainly, um, ask that question to the town attorney, what's a reasonable time for a sort of a tabling to be out there? I know under subdivision rule, I think you, it's like six months or something like that, there is a timeframe. From the time you have your first sketch plan meeting, preliminary plan meeting, to the time you bring a final plan back. Um, I don't know that we have anything specific, but I can certainly look into that. Um, again, I think that problem gets resolved when you say, um, you know, we're going to table this for two months or three months. And so you set the date for the, you know, January, February, March meeting, whatever the, that month is being, and that goes into the minutes.
My biggest concern is I didn't want, because of the way the rule says about ninety days to record, I was worried that it was ninety days, uh, because we have recorded the ninety days, it was almost-
It's only from the time you approve it.
So, I, I was kind of saying, well, I would, I don't want them to be in a situation where I not knowing or not disclosing, we've put them in a bad situation. But at this point, it would be helpful to, to at least, uh, to get some kind of a, a position.
I mean, while you're on the topic, what about this request to table until Ap- April?
It was April.
I mean, that's, theirs has been tabled for two months now, they're asking to table until April. I mean, how does the board feel about that?
I, I don't think it's appropriate because I think the applicants, the neighbors could even have changed in that time frame. That's a long time. And, uh, my personal opinion is that that, that is not appropriate.
Can, can you explain why? It's not about, let me explain why. Uh, it's not about not getting your permit payment in.
No.
It's about going too long and the public not having the right to access that.
Or the-
The advertising process of advertising that you're going to come before the board again.
That, that's really, my issue is, is, is probably twofold. And, and it really revolves around the, the neighbors.
Mm-hmm.
And, and you're right. Um, tabling out that long, that you could have a change in neighbors. Somebody else could buy a home right next to them. Um, you forget, some of these people may not be in the area and in fact are out, out of state in April. Now, that happens a lot in that area, and that's just how life works. But it would be very easy to forget, they're not going to get a letter from us saying that's been tabled.
Correct.
So they're not going to know this has been tabled. As far as they're concerned, they're going to assume this has been dropped. And I, or that's what I would assume. So I'll assume that they'll assume the same as I do. They're smarter than I am. They live on that street. Um, but that being said, I, I just think that is an unreasonable timeframe. Um, and, uh, what to do with it, I'd suggest that they have to not necessarily go through the fees again, except for the notice to the neighbors again, I think is reasonable. I don't know what.
That's what I'm thinking.
And I don't know what you guys think of that from, from a town and legal point of view. I don't think it needs to be re-advertized necessarily. We didn't get any letters from the last one, did we? So, could you do us a favor and follow up?
They actually got, they had letters in favor of.
In favor, right.
In favor. Could, could we just get the, any documentation from that for the next meeting?
For Vester and Boca.
Yeah, and then my, my suggestion would be, if in fact there's no negatives, then we do a letter to the abutters, but not do a letter, not do a, a filing.
Well, wh- you know, I mean, the way I look at it is, I agree. I, I, I feel like it's a long time out. That was the request, and the, the request was that.
Glad you brought it up.
It, it wasn't, it wasn't for any reason other than to try to m- meet our timeframes for when permits expire and approvals expire. One of the things I would like to see amended is I believe that the six month approval expiration date is ridiculous. I think once you guys, once somebody's gone to the trouble of coming in here and making the presentation, and you guys have come to the, gone to the trouble of, of discussing it and, and doing your findings and conclusions and approving it, that thing ought to be good for a year.
I agree.
You know, to me, to me, because, and, and especially here where you've got a majority of the approvals are in beach communities where they have these sort of unwritten.
It was three or four months of construction.
Yeah, where there's a prohibition on construction throughout the summer months, and it's Maine, and and that's when we build.
Right.
And, and so to me, our six month approval, it, it jives well with our building permit thing, but they're really two separate issues. Your approval should be good for a year. When you apply for your building permit is, is the more strategic thing.
Is that our purview, or is that state driven or, or town driven?
It's certainly not straight, state driven. It's in our charter. It says all permits and approvals are good for six months. It's in ch- in section four.
But now to change the charter, you have to go to vote, right?
Well, it's in our charter for the zoning board, not the.
Okay.
Well, it's actually, it's only in the ordinance. It's only in the ordinance, so it would only be an ordinance amendment.
So Brian, do we, does, does.
I think. It would only be an ordinance.
I think you're right.
So what you're saying is that this board does not have the approval, the, the authority to extend that under certain circumstances.
Extension is a different animal. The approval is good for six months. They can get an extension in, i- if they apply in writing for good cause.
Yeah.
You may extend that approval for another six months. So essentially, you can give them a year, but it's not inherent in the approval.
I, I guess what I was saying, what I meant was that at the time that they come in and get the approval, if they foresaw that there could be a problem because of the, of the winter schedule and everything, could we at that time give them eight, nine months or whatever?
It's not set up that way.
Yeah, my understanding is no.
We don't have that authority.
Yeah, it's not set up that way.
The other problem is they're in double jeopardy to some extent because it really, unlike the one we, we chose as a board to just make a, I think, a very intelligent decision on number one, and, and use the previous and just move on, it could be very easy, especially on a split vote, that, uh, the board changes just enough so that some, they've got all their work done, all their plans done. They won on a split vote, and that, that's how it works. They come back and find out that the split vote goes the other way. Um, I, I'll, I'll bring this up to the ordinance committee and then get back to the, to the, uh, the board about that.
What is the board's pleasure on the request to table until April?
I agree. I think it's too long.
You asked for documentation.
I think if we get, uh, but I, I guess the question I would have is until we've got a rule, which we really don't have, that I, that I can think of, I, I think we can control it the way we want to because there's no rule. So I would say, wh- wh- when did this first come to us?
Which one? Boca?
August.
To me, it's six months. They need to redisclose. They need to re, they need to re, I wouldn't charge them the fees for applications. I would charge them the fees.
The, the problem is the application fees, I think, is I understand it barely covers the cost of advertising, but you're not going to, you're, you're saying we don't have to.
Well, that's my question.
For each time they appear.
I don't know that you can mix and match that.
Yeah, I think if you're all in, often, and I think that realistically after six months of tabling, that, I, my personal opinion, without further guidance from the regulations, is it would be appropriate to re-advertize.
What we can do, what I, what I'll propose is then if that's your decision, is that that's too long a, a time to table, and you'd rather have them withdraw, if they withdraw, you haven't voted on it.
Right.
So they still have the right to come back within a year's time.
Mhm, that's correct.
At any point and reapply.
Yeah, right.
And so we can salvage all the materials so that they don't have to reprint everything.
That's great.
Um, we already have the abutters list. I would, I would just simply have them withdraw and reapply for April's meeting and resubmit the same stuff that they've already gone to the cost and effort of reproducing and, um.
I would agree with that.
And, and I mean, and just, just pay the fee and do the advertising the way we would normally. Because I think if we start pulling punches, the, the only exception, the only exception to that is that, um, the written accept, uh, the written ex, uh, request for an extension, our policy is that there needs to be a letter accompanied by the certificate of approval that they got originally, and a seventy-five dollar fee for administrative costs in putting them on the agenda. And so that, that's the only exception to the full fees. I think when it's a, that's just for an extension of that, already got an approval, it hasn't expired. That would be the only exception to that. Otherwise, I think any application to the board, you know, once it's withdrawn and reapplied, you, it's going to be the full, full vote again. We have to send the notices out. We have to advertise it the same way what we do, um, anytime. I don't think we'd want to start playing, uh, playing with that process too much.
Much wiser advice. I think that's my counsel.
Um, that's my feeling. But for next time, Karen and I will work on getting some answers to some of those questions. They're valid questions, and I think we ought to have some guidance, um, from legal on what that should look like, and if, if appropriate, then I think we ought to propose some amendments if that's the process. I would ask the board to propose an amendment to extend the approval to a year.
Twelve months.
And if you'd like, we can do that, uh, right now. If, uh, I'll move that, we make that request for the ordinance committee to look at this ordinance and extend the approval for one year. Do you have a second?
I second that.
Discussion on that motion. See, no. Favor? That's unanimous, so it makes it easier. So I'll take care of that. I'll, I'll, do, do you want to do it with me too?
We, we can work on this together. I'll draft something up for you.
Thank you. That'd be awesome. Great. I love the way this board, this board seems to be running very comfortable right now, except for me using my own sheets. Um.
Have we, have we moved on to zoning board comments?
Not yet.
Okay.
Uh, that'd be next. Actually, you're up for that, so, uh, feel free with your comments.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to shorten any.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. We'll start with you.
Okay. I just wanted to, on, on that last note, it's a great segue into next month. I understand that two members have conflicts, and so we are down to four members for next month's meeting, and I know that we have already, I think, there's at least two appeals, if not more. And, um, so I, I'm just, you know, frantically begging to make sure that we have four, four members.
I suspect I may be out. I may have to put a mission.
Cause you were one of them, right? You were one.
I, I don't know if I was one of them.
And Mr. Herbert, you were the other.
Hebert, yes.
Hebert, I'm sorry. Hebert was the other one.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Oh, wait, Mr. Richard.
Okay, so we don't have.
So we don't have a quorum.
Okay.
So that, uh, makes that easier. Uh.
So it was on Tuesday, November tenth?
Yeah.
So a week later, I'm available a week later.
November seventeenth, uh, the two, the Wednesday?
Any, well, I'm just putting that out there. I'm available any time the following, let me think.
That Wednesday would be.
The eighteenth.
The, uh, council meeting.
Oh, yeah.
If it was a Tuesday, I could be.
I could shoot for that Tuesday, Brian, the seventeenth.
Because planning board would be on a Monday, right?
Um, hang on, I gotta pull the calendar up just a minute. I'm sorry. I, I'm a visual.
See, the problem this creates, it's, it's, it's not as, I, I mean, I'm not coming down on anybody here, but it, it is incred- this room is, these facilities are booked. They're booked, and just to try to get an, an alternate date.
Hard to do.
Is incredibly difficult.
So Monday would be.
It creates incredible problems, and then you start to push that twentieth of the month deadline for submissions.
Oh, yeah.
From other people. It, it just creates a wrinkle. If any, if at all possible, if you can go begging crawling, if you need me to write a letter to your boss, if you need me to threaten your boss, I would be happy to do it. Most of you are your boss.
No, I don't understand. How come you're not in charge of your schedule?
Cause we're the boss. It's, it's great to be king.
I, again, I feel bad. You guys are volunteering your time. I really appreciate that. You're a good bunch of, of people. You, you're smart. You ask good questions. You do, do a great job. I want you to be here on the second Wednesday of the month. That's all I ask.
Can I ask a question? Um, is there any?
You can ask it of the chairman, and I don't have control of the board.
Okay, can I ask a question?
Hmm.
I, is there anybody who has conflict for like November third, fourth?
I've gone that all week.
Okay. Seventeenth or nineteenth, cause I have to, I have to have a couple options.
I think that's better for me.
The seventeenth or the nineteenth? Okay. So we may have to just extend the submissions from the twentieth to the following, so just.
I'm afraid it's going to be off the course to elections.
Seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth are fine.
Yeah, oh, that's a good, that's a good point. We may not be able to get this room.
Thanksgiving, you run into, you need, November's a tough enough month as it is.
Yeah, elections.
I'll do my best, and I'll, I'll, I'll do tomorrow on Friday.
Can't stand the, uh, deadlines though, because we have, we have a date that we need to.
Right, and we.
Kelly, are you looking, or Karen, you looking at, um, the seventeenth?
Seventeenth or the nineteenth? I have to have a couple options when I go into that calendar.
Okay, I will email you.
So that's it. Cause Monday is planning board, so Tuesday's a possibility. Wednesday is town council. So I was doing the Tuesday and Thursday to see if I could get the.
Probably Thursday would be better for me, but I can.
I'm available all that week, but I'll certainly respond to.
The nineteenth?
Yeah, I'll check my email over the email.
Some of us, you just, you don't know till you know.
I don't want to rock it, Brian, so I'll make whatever.
Okay. I'll, I'll look tomorrow.
Why can't we do it on the second Wednesday again? Why can't we do it on the second Wednesday again?
We're closed. We're closed. It's Veterans Day.
Oh, right.
So we moved it to the Tuesday.
Right, yeah, then I'm not gonna be.
What about the, what about that Thursday, the twelfth?
Uh, Jim is out of town.
You're out of town.
I'm out of town for the week.
Okay, okay. All right.
So we're, we're, we're looking at the following week.
Seventeenth or the nineteenth I'm gonna look at.
James, are you, are you ba- are you, uh, back that next week?
I am back the Tuesday, the seventeenth, not Thursday, the nineteenth. The Tuesday, the seventeenth.
You would be around the seventeenth, okay.
The seventeenth, Tuesday, I will be.
Okay.
She will be around the nineteenth.
No.
I'll, I'll just have to look tomorrow and see what's available.
Well, stay tuned to your emails.
Yeah.
And we'll, we'll bring out a few dates that might be possibilities if we forget. The only reason, I've been working with one of the opponents that will be, um, committing for next month, and she's, she's, um, she needs to break ground if possible this year, and it's a, I think it's going to be a limited reduction of yard, uh, I can't remember, a limited reduction of yard size or practical difficulty. And, and to put her off to December basically is going to kill her project, and it's, it's an in-law necessity kind of thing. I think it has a relatively good chance of getting past. If she passed away till December, it may not work out, so it's really important to hear it next month, and even backing it up a week could be pretty detrimental. So that's why, that's just one reason. There's nothing more.
You're actually kidding. Wow.
I try to do my best, you know.
He's put on a front.
And, and it's not just because of that, but that's, you know, people are depending on that schedule, and, and when you start backing it off two or three weeks, makes a difference.
It changes that holiday.
Are we?
Yeah.
Um, I believe you guys received an email from Mr. Longstaff regarding the workshop for MMA.
Yep.
So if anyone would like to attend, let me know, cause I'm gonna be going, and, uh, another planning board member so far.
Is that the thirtieth?
It's the twenty ninth.
So again, that's a rehash from what most of us have just gone to in the last year.
Um.
And it's local, I believe.
It is. It's South Portland. They do offer, MMA offers it approximately five to six times a year. This is a local one. It's the last one for the year.
Refreshing. I think I'm gonna do that one.
Okay.
Yeah. Does it twenty ninth, Karen? I'll look at it. My email.
Uh, it is because Halloween's on Saturday, and it's that Thursday before, so it's the twenty ninth. So if you can let me know, I'll, I'll send an email out, uh, towards the middle of next week, cause I wanna go online and find everybody up, um, that Friday or Monday. Just trying to get us, make sure we have spots, so.
If you've gone within the last year or two, it's probably gonna feel pretty rehashy, but, um, they do cover any statutory changes that have occurred, uh, from session to session. So if you think, no, I'm not sure that any have occurred, but it's always kind of good, and the questions, um, that get asked by other people are sometimes helpful to, to hear their questions and a, and hear the answers. So it's, it's never, I've gone to several of them sometimes in the same year, uh, in the past, and I always get something out of it, so.
And when they talk about variances, just get up and go to the bathroom. Does that share other questions?
That kind of just brought your whole comment.
Maybe at the beginning of next year, like in January, if we could, uh, maybe just an internal email to all of us, just showing a schedule. That way we could anticipate any, uh, Veterans Day conflicts.
It's always the second.
It is always.
Always the second unless it's, but, yes, I, I can send you something.
Yeah, I, I would appreciate that, thanks.
Okay, yeah.
Cause I, I.
Or what the date, I'll just list out the date.
Yeah.
Does that work?
Yeah, cause I work on all the public holidays, unfortunately.
Any other comments from board members? None? I think that the, the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second?
And all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you very much. Have a great night.